I don't get any more intelligent or good looking after this point, so.
All right, so we're going to continue on in regards to the housing choices and I could probably share with you my screen because since we broke, I did pull up the townhome standards and so that we can have like a comparison in regards to the triplex or quadplex. But again, it is dealing with ownerships and they're totally separate projects, but they look very similar. So let me see if I can just bring this up. There you go. So this, can you guys see my pointer?
Yes.
Yes, excellent. So this site here is part of the ordinance that you guys adopted last December, last month, and this is the townhome garages and it talks about the standards that's tied to what would be required for a local street. Similarly to the image to the right, it's a triplex and a quadplex driveway approach also on a local street where it does basically says that it can't be exceeding thirty-two square feet per frontage and you would combine a this point, this point, this point, this point. It can't be more than thirty-two. So if there were four driveways, so they would be eight feet, if I'm doing my math multiplication correct. So versus for this standards on for townhomes, it's showing that it has to be a twelve-foot maximum. And I do want to also point out that as I scroll up, there are additional standards that's tied to townhomes, their garages and access and alleyways. So they are addressed. Similarly, we would be doing the same thing for triplex and quadplexes because they're, they look very similar, but just because of the fee simple and ownership, they're totally different processes.
Now, Joy, regarding standards, though, would, would the design standards essentially be identical for, for townhomes versus quadplexes? Like, I understand the ownership.
Yes. Well, I mean, all, so all of the residential design standards that you guys worked on so hard and passed and was approved last year, they, they would all apply to single-family townhomes, triplex, quads, and cottage clusters, all of them. With the only exception would be multifamily, just because they would go through site plan review, which has its own residential multifamily standards.
Okay. Okay, yeah, that's what seems to, would be, would be the simplest and then make the most sense is that since they're essentially the same, you know, for lack of a better word, product, that they would all adhere to the same standards, but when it comes to ownership issues or, or, you know, divisions or things like that, then, then it would make sense that it would just deal with what, what changes or differences need to be included, so.
Well, I think, I think part of it is they, they happen to look the same on this grid. Quadplexes don't have to look this way. Man, there was a lot of pictures we went through selecting design standards of quadplexes that tell different forms and shapes. This is one of them and it looks like townhomes. In that sense, totally agree. That would make a lot of sense, but I, I don't know. I think if we go down that road, it'd be like, okay, when a quadplex looks like a townhome, you know, do these things and I guess it'll get complicated.
So I do have a question for the commission, because I did from our, when we first started, do you want me to look at minimum spacing standards between driveways to try to preserve parking spaces in between? Because the standards that we currently have doesn't reflect that, that we could definitely put language in there that says ideally to preserve parking or on-street parking, driveway should be combined.
We run into a problem when there's, you know, this property has got it on their far right and the other one's got it on its far left. You know what I mean? And then.
In that, I think in that case, you could also impose a minimum, minimum distance as well.
Yeah, but I, so I like the ideally located, but I, I do, because, so, so you're saying that if, if there's an existing driveway and I'm putting in my driveway, I cannot put it, you know, on the, on the, you know, so that there's less than a minimum amount, even though it opens up parking on the whole rest of my lot, right? But I can't put it on the far one so that they're right next to each other with my neighbors. So if we, if we do the minimum amount, there's an unintended knock-on consequence of an existing driveway that's there, right? Does that make sense?
I think, I think we can't, I understand what you're saying. If your lot is, we can only regulate the new quadplex when it comes in. We can't regulate what happens already. All we can do is encourage the quadplex as it's coming on to share driveways to optimize parking on-street parking.
Okay, so if it's one of those quadplexes that is four up, so two upstairs, two downstairs, how many driveways do I have?
You most, you'd most likely still have four driveways or assuming you had still four garage spots, one for each unit, you, I imagine you would still have the same number of driveways.
You'd still have the same number of garages, whether or not they had shared driveways or not.
Okay, I just, all right, I don't want to, I feel like we're, we might be boxing it too much, but I, if, I'm not gonna, this is not the hill I'm gonna die on.
I was gonna say, instead of saying you shall, we say we encourage shared driveways to maximize on-street parking.
Jean, but, but then does that not, like, does that essentially not give it any teeth to ensure that, that on-street parking is, is preserved?
It does. Correct.
It loses its teeth, right?
It does.
Yeah.
But again.
Okay, if we want to include that it, you know, they have to be at least, you know, twelve feet apart or whatever you said, Jean, I, I'm fine with that. I, I just, I worry about being too prescriptive, but chronically.
Like, that's giving, this is giving it two options. You can either group them all together and have the shared driveway, or if you insist on them being separate, then they have to have a minimum distance separating them to, to ensure, or to preserve on-street parking.
Okay.
What we can do is, taking all of your comments today, we can definitely look at scenarios on how we could best maximize on-street parking in regards to, you know, instead of just encouraging, but requiring a minimum. So let, let's.
I don't think we can, we can't require on-street parking with middle housing, correct?
Right, right.
But we can require the distance between driveways.
That's.
To be twelve feet, right? I'm, I'm fine with that. If you just said, if you said you either have them together as a shared driveway, or they have to be separated by at least twelve feet, and if you add them all together, it can't be more than thirty-two.
Thirty-two, okay.
That's, that sounds great.
See if that works.
I mean, I assume, I actually just saying twelve, how big's a car? Is that about twelve?
An SUV seventeen feet, seventeen to nineteen feet.
So do we say eighteen feet?
You probably don't have enough distance to do eighteen feet.
Okay, so let's just say twelve. We'll just say, if you have an SUV, you gotta park somewhere else, maybe.
At least a smaller car can fit on it, so.
Yeah.
All right, so what we can do is, we can definitely add that standard and I'll, to see what the typical standards would be for a parking space that's on-street, as far as the, is it twelve feet? Is it a little bit bigger? And then we can definitely come back. I come back to you, not on.
Uh-oh, I think we lost.
Not on the, can you, can you guys hear me?
Now we can.
Oh, excellent. Okay, so we, I don't come back to you on the twenty-fifth because of your workload, but I do come back, I believe, on the eighth of February, and I'll come back with a scheme and that proposed language and just make sure that I've talked to our transportation experts to make sure that, you know, we can still be satisfied, or we can set, we can still meet those standards to encourage additional on-street parking.
Shared driveways get an extra foot for a maximum.
And I, I'm okay with finding a way to prescribe if it makes sense, but I agree Commissioner Giles, not worth falling your sword on this one necessarily. And, and I do think there's a world where encouraging things is okay, because I think a lot of developers want to play nice with the city they operate in, too. To some extent, certainly you want to prescribe a lot, but there might be some things, you know, if the city wants certain things generally a certain way, maybe they want to play nice in the city, they will. You know, maybe that's the way they can show it, so.
And definitely during pre-application conferences, we let the applicant know that this is what's encouraged, just because there's a big concern within the community in regards to parking, or lack of on-street parking.
And then when they come, you know, with their application to our commission, they can make a big stink out of how they, you know, adhere to the encouragement.
Exactly.
Yeah, which is good. That's what we want. So I do have one question, it's probably kind of a dumb question, but I just wanted clarity. So I realize we cannot stipulate the kind of housing on lots anymore. That's out with this. We can't say single-family only, but we still have zones, right? So when I looked at one of your slides, it had like VLDR and LDR and there's like, these are the, I think those are the size of lots allowed on those zones?
Yes.
So we could still zone VLDR and they could put whatever, a quadplex on there if they want to, but they basically get one on forty thousand square feet. That's how, that's how it would work? Okay, so in that sense, we still have some control over total density if we have to, kind of. Like, if we, maybe over time, if we start seeing that, boy, these developers are just packing these things in as tight as they can go, no matter what, all the time, maybe we just zone more VLDR, or something like that. I'm just hypothetically speaking. I don't know. I mean, am I thinking about that right? Is that what, what's allowed? Like, we, we can control the overall density, just not the kind of units on it because of, because of zoning?
So it's my understanding there, there isn't a maximum density that's applied to, to middle housing outside the requirement, specific to middle housing. The OAR very specifically states that maximum density standards are not applied to middle housing choices. So what we can definitely do, though, have minimum lot-sized areas. And I do want to stress that we, the model code typically requires less in regards to square footages, but as long as we're treating all single-family the same as the rest of the middle housing, that's why the standards that we do have, like in the VLDR, is forty thousand square feet, and with a VLDR PUD is ten thousand, and so on. Then we're good in regards to retreating all middle housing the same. So the question, I guess, Erica, I don't know about the density.
Yeah, so, moving forward, remember we have the metro, I know, this is going to be a little big-picture thinking here. So in our housing needs analysis, we have to meet the metropolitan housing rule. And in that rule, for Sherwood, we have to meet our, at least six units per acre. So moving forward, if we zoned, you know, the rest of Sherwood VLDR and had big lots and everybody put, you know, one unit per forty thousand square feet, we, we're not going to meet, we could end up not meeting that housing, that housing rule.
Right.
So, you know, really what this housing, what, what House Bill 2001 does, we're just not counting that extra density for a quadplex, you know, or, or a triplex. It's, it's, it's kind of a bonus. I, I don't know.
I think.
I don't think bonus is the right word.
I don't think bonus is the right word. I think, I think, I think going forward as a community, we need to be mindful that when we're targeting Metro six units net per acre, that we are mindful that if we hit the target with our least, sorry, if we, we target for the highest maximum so that we meet the six, and then your bonuses are added in there, our density will be, could be four times what you're saying. So the bonus density is not really a bonus, it's a, to take away, I guess, is my opinion. And so when we go into the Sherwood West area, or we look at other zonings, we have to say, you know, low-density residential is intended four to ten units per acre, and because of quadplexes and triplexes, we are now looking at twelve to thirty units per acre, and by the nature, every, every zone that we have is going to generate at least six units per acre at the minimum. So we need to keep zoning towards the minimum, in my opinion, if we want to maintain Sherwood's livability.
So quadplex counts as four units, right? That would, that would count, it's not by building numbers, numbers of buildings, it's the units in them.
Do you want to know the units, right?
Okay, so if we zone VLDR, basically they get one building per acre, effectively.
Correct, right now, in our code.
Yeah. Whether it's duplex, quadplex, whatever it is, they get one. Okay, thanks.
And then they would put it under a PUD, and then they get four units per acre, and then they get four, four quads per acre. So now you're, where you had thought one unit was going to go, now sixteen dwelling units live, based on state mandates and the box.
Amazing.
All right, other questions? If not, the next meeting that I will be presenting cottage clusters, and that's, we'll continue our conversation where we left off last year in rega, in regards to cottage clusters, where we, you know, at the time where we decided to make this into a two-phase project. So I'll bring those standards, proposed amendments in front of you and continue that discussion on February eighth.
All right. Is anybody rolling back or challenging this in court, or trying to make other state-level cases, why this is harmful to some jurisdictions, or are all other counties and cities just buckling under and?
The last time, the last time I asked this question, I think it was in mid-November of last year, 2021, and the question, the answer that I had heard is that no, that no other city is, you know, challenging this in court, and all the other cities right now are trying to comply with the bill.
And League of Oregon Cities isn't doing anything to advocate for fringe neighborhoods that are at risk?
That's my current understanding, and, but I will go back and get an update.
Okay.
Have, have we explored that as our city attorney looked at that? I assume it'd be on some kind of grounds under Oregon Constitution or something, is what I'm gonna think.
So I'll, I'll chime in. I'm not, I'm not aware of any formal conversations, but I would be surprised if Josh hadn't considered that and had conversations if it was, if it was on the table, if that makes sense. We can talk with Josh and kind of see what he's looked at, but I would be surprised if he hadn't at least contemplated the idea.
I'd be curious. That'd obviously be a city council call, not ours, but, but I'd be curious about it. It is a trend. Zoning laws are a big deal, and they were even talking about doing something like this federally across the board, which would be something, too.
Okay. Thank you, Joy.
All right, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Joy.
So our last other item that we skipped over in the work session was Planning Commission Training on Staff Report Recommendations and Findings. And there you have a Planning Commission Training 101. And so you're gonna, are you gonna go bare bones quasi-judicial versus legislative?
And this? I, I am not comparing the two per se, but I do talk a little bit about legislative hearings versus quasi-judicial, but I'm primarily focusing on our quasi-judicial land use process findings and decision-making for the planning commission.
Right, and just from a ten-thousand-foot perspective to get me and the other commissioners grounded, quasi-judicial are the ones that we have to refer to the code as it exists at the time the application was submitted. Legislative land use decisions are our ability to potentially change code or policy within the community and have a more free-form opportunity for us to go off-book, I guess is the way I look at it. Legislative sounds more restrictive, but it actually has more flexibility in how you are able to make decisions. Quasi-judicial, you have to be prescriptive based on the code as written at the time the application was submitted.
Yes, that is a great summary, Chair Simpson. So tonight, I've put together just a short training session on quasi-judicial land use decisions. Let me, we will be discussing tonight, you know, responsibilities of the planning commission staff and applicant, exactly what is a quasi-judicial here in land use process, why and how standards are applied to findings and our staff reports, and how those findings relate back to the criteria and ultimately outcome, which is the planning commission's decision. And then we'll discuss how planning commission may change a decision or a finding in a land use application. So I always like to start training sessions with responsibilities. It's a great, it's a great reminder to really understand everyone's role in the land use planning process. So some of the responsibilities of planning commission include, you know, you are the ones that are reflecting the community's values. You should have an understanding of the land use process itself. You know, you're responsible for, you know, educating our community about land use processes and procedures, and, you know, knowing limits of the commission. And then you're interpreting code and you're making decisions, whether those decisions are, you know, quasi-judicial or legislative actions. So staff, staff responsibilities include, we administer the land use code, which is the Sherwood Development and Zoning Code, the COT Plan, and all of our, you know, master plans, which include, you know, the transportation system plan, our parks master plan, and all of our utility plans that we have. Oftentimes, we research and prepare plans and then, you know, come back to our city committees and boards and commissions and explain the results of that work to get, you know, feedback, to prepare future, you know, code amendments or ordinances. We assist and educate community members about the land use process and city codes. And we often, we work with other governmental bodies and agencies such as, you know, Washington County and ODOT and Clean Water Services. And then we advise an assist planning commission, of course. And then we enforce land use conditions to, you know, to make sure that when development occurs, it occurs in the way that it was ultimately approved. So the applicant's responsibility, so the applicant has the responsibility to, to, you know, demonstrate that their request conforms to the city land use plans and ordinances, you know, at the time that they submit a land use application. Oftentimes, you, you will hear that the applicant bears the burden of proof in land use decision, in land use decisions, and, you know, that is the case. So what does quasi- judicial mean? Jean really summed this up great. The, the legal terminology here is, you know, a quasi-judicial action is when the facts of a particular situation are applied policy standards and criteria. So when you have a land use application that comes in, that land use application has to, you know, apply consistent with the policy and standards and criteria that is reviewed against. The planning commission acts as a quasi-judicial body. You are the ultimate decision-makers in these decisions. And some of the example of quasi-judicial hearings includes site plan reviews, subdivisions, variances, you know, conditional use permits that you see. And so planning commission will, you know, oftentimes take these quasi- quasi-judicial actions as well as legislative actions. And those legislative actions are a more, you know, policy-directed. So those legislative actions are, you know, changing the development code language, changing, you know, a comprehensive land use designation, you know, adopting master plans for the community.
Can you give me an example of a site plan review?
Yes, I can, I, yes. So a site plan review, you know, take for instance, I'm just gonna say the Target Shopping Center.
That's not a very good example.
What was that?
I wouldn't use that example because that's a PUD. That was.
Oh, that was a P, that was a PUD. There's so many PUDs. A large, a large industrial warehouse building that comes in, you would review, you know, that site, you know, against parking, landscaping, the possibility of our industrial design standards for that, for that site.
So an application would be there's one thing approved and they want something else?
No, so let me do layman's terms. So there's site plans, which are, they come in to be judged by us to see if they meet the criteria. If it's really easy and the site plan is a single house, it goes to the city staff because it's easy. There's one, one house. If it's fifty or more houses, it's an impactful, large enough to be a site plan that comes before the planning commission, but it's still judged quasi-judicially based on the code that's in place at the time.
So what you're saying is even if they comply with every bit of code, just because of its sheer size, we still have to sign off?
Right, because the, the staff is interpreting our code, and because of the size of the application, it's warranted to have, the staff makes a staff report and they interpret the code, and it's our job to confirm that the staff has interpreted the code in the manner that we believe that the code was written to be interpreted.
Okay, so in that case.
I'm just about to get to that.
But I wanted to give you an example of why Target didn't meet the, my criteria of what a site plan is. But I wanted to give you an example of why Target didn't meet my criteria of what a site plan is. Because a planned unit development does not meet a quasi judicial. Planned unit development is a city council legislative matter. It's more legislative in nature because they get to change the code in the planned unit development process. So it's a site plan with a code change in it.
Not a permanent code, just one that applies to that site?
PUD, say that again?
A code change applying only to that site.
Correct.
Permanent overall city code change.
Correct. And that's why a PUD is, is a beast all by itself because we're changing a code just for that site.
Which gives us a lot of flexibility and also denial, ability to deny if we want to.
Correct. And that's, that's the difference between a site plan and a PUD.
So site plans, if they check all the boxes, staff thinks they do, I mean, we'd be, did you say the burden is on the applicant to prove that it does? Or is it us? Okay. So prove it does.
The, the burden is always on the applicant.
Okay. And if we think it doesn't, we should probably have pretty clear cut reasons why, because they're going to appeal to the city council, basically in those cases.
Or, or the Land Use Board of Appeals of the state.
Right.
I think one, a recent example that you guys had that really hit that home frustratingly for, for you guys or maybe the, the public was the hotel that was approved, the Hampton Hotel, where it met the standards. The neighbors didn't like it, felt that it didn't, it wasn't the right location, but it met the code criteria and the planning commission. If I recall correctly, kind of the feeling was we, we really don't have a choice, even though we've got a room full of people that are upset. It meets all the code criteria and so it's, we have to approve it. That, that's a, a really bad, simple summary of that project, but.
I have a, yeah, I have a couple, yeah, I have a couple of good examples, either both ways where, because Walmart was the same scenario was that it was, it met the code. But there was a couple where everybody knows where the Chevron station is. The applicant came in to build something. And the staff's determination was that it was that they were in the right of way or they were in the setback area and they were going to deny the application. And it became before the commission. And the applicant's burden of proof was this setback area was adequately set back until ODOT came along and changed my lot line. And it then became in an, in an amount that was a small enough to be almost like a variance. And the planning commission took what the applicant said and said that the staff report recommending denial, we can make findings that are in agreement that the applicant met the burden of proof that this met the code at the time that they purchased the property and that the subsequent changes were not self imposed. These were not self imposed hardship that the, that the ODOT came along. And so the staff then wrote an approval with the findings based on the commission's hearing and how the applicant brought forth burden of proof that they had met the code. So that was, you know, that's where a commission, and I don't remember if that was a, I don't know, Julia, if you remember if that was a appeal from the site, staff level, or if it was just came to us because of the application itself. But that's one that I remember. I felt like we had made, a, a commission had made a good call because here is an applicant that had the burden of proof, but staff was in an awkward position. And so.
And the, and it sounds like the commission could have denied it tech, on technical grounds potentially, but they would have appealed and likely won.
Yeah. It, it's hard to say when the.
But it's also kind of a judgment. Yeah.
Right. When, when they met, they met the code criteria, except for the fact that and, and agency took away, you know, some of their.
Which is not their fault. But this is actually one of the things enlightening about what you're saying is, you know, when I vote yes on some of these applicants, it's not necessarily a yes that says, yeah, I like this, go for it. It's more like, yes, I reviewed this and I agree that it meets the definition and that's the way it needs to be substantially.
Correct.
We're only making the recommendation to go to city council though.
In a legislative matter.
Okay. We're talking, I'm thinking about site plans and stuff. Like going back to the hotel example, as a commission, we could vote no, but knowing it'd go to Luba, we'd lose at Luba.
Correct.
We'd vote no just because we don't want it or something, but we'd lose. So it's really like my yes vote, it doesn't mean I really want this hotel here. It means they comply with city code and I review it and that's the way we looked at it. Yeah. But if they're asking for something outside of what code is, like a variant, like major, variance isn't the right word, but some major difference or a zoning change or something like that, those are things, are those the kinds of things where we can go, well, we, we represent the city in a way. I mean, the council does and they've dominated us. We can just say, no, we don't want this. We want what's zoned or we want what's the code sets. So, no.
So I think Erica will probably be getting, getting to those different scenarios. If it's, I mean, there's different, there's different, different avenues and different applications. You guys, while in theory you could do whatever you want, it is strongly encouraged that you don't and it would be bad form and our attorneys would be very upset. And so, you know, when you're following the quasi judicial process, you're really following the code and, and, and making sure, you know, and if you, if you make, if you deviate, it's got to be grounded in the facts of the findings and the law. But then there are instances and paths where you will be making a non quasi judicial decision or a recommendation to council. And I, I don't know if that's part of Erica's presentation this evening or not.
Part of it is. The legislative decision that, you know, the recommendation we're, we're not going over this evening. But kind of what you touched on there, Julia, that the commission can, you know, change findings, but those findings have to reflect evidence in the record. We're going to go over that here in just a minute. So just an overall framework for land, for the land use hearing process for quasi judicial land use decisions. You know, first and foremost, it's an opportunity for the applicant to be heard and also for the community to be heard. It's an opportunity for the applicant to, you know, present, you know, their application and to, you know, rebut, you know, any evidence that might come up. And they also, the applicant has the right to an impartial hearing. You know, oftentimes we talk about, you know, biases and ex parte, you know, biases and conflict of interest. We, you know, that's why we have that little statement at the beginning of each hearing. And commissioners, you know, need to enter into the record any ex parte, you know, communication that they've had, you know, concerning, you know, the, the possible outcome of a decision. And we apply the standards and the criteria that we have in the code at the time that the land use application was submitted. And then the applicant definitely has a right to the record of the proceeding, of the proceedings to make sure that, you know, all the procedures were followed in the correct way. Because as you know, with, you know, land use hearings and land use process, there are, you know, a, a set of, you know, timeframes that we need to comply with, you know, noticing rules. There's, there's a lot of, you know, set regulation in the process itself. So the standards and criteria. So like I said, the decision must apply the approval criteria, you know, to the facts in the case. Land use decisions need to be based on the approval criteria. Planning staff, we will oftentimes list all the approval criteria in our staff presentation. And that criteria that's listed is, you know, the criteria in the city's development code. The planning commission, you as a body, you need to apply those standards to the application. The application must be approved, even if the decision makers, you, the planning commission, don't necessarily agree with the criteria or believe that the criteria should apply. So if they meet the criteria, you know, in, in the code, the decision must be, you know, ultimately approved because it's the development code, you know, is the lens in which you are reviewing, you know, these applicant, these quasi judicial applications.
And Erica, if I can chime in.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. If I can chime in and use the, the hotel as an example, that was one where the commission heard a lot from folks about that not being the right location for a hotel. It was, it was inappropriate next to residential areas and it was going to be too tall and, and those types of things. The criteria, you know, it was zoned, what it was zoned and the criteria allowed things of, of, I'm, I'm making, I'm not, not deep enough in the, the facts to remember the, the height and those types of things. But, so it doesn't, the planning commission couldn't apply criteria, even if they're like, yeah, that really shouldn't have gone there. That's, that doesn't matter. The code allowed it there and they met the standards of the code in terms of height and setbacks and parking and that kind of stuff. So that's just sort of another reminder of that, that criteria.
And I guess this should go without saying, but it would take, like if we were to say, oh, we made a mistake in writing that code, it would take the city council to come in and say, hey, we're going to put a stop on this and we, we made an error in our code. Whether or not it, it's, you complied to it, we, we can't have that there for whatever reason.
Right.
That's not something, that's not our call, right?
Right. And, and it absolutely cannot apply to an application that is currently in it. You know, you can't move the goalposts after the application has been submitted.
For any reason whatsoever?
No reason whatsoever.
Okay.
They would have to resubmit under new code.
Well, yeah, because changes like that would affect, potentially affect the property value owner, property. It's their property. They bought it with an understanding of what they can do with it and so on and so forth.
No, yeah, I'm just, I'm saying, yeah, don't, don't worry about it. I was just wanting to be real clear about that.
But favorable or unfavorable, if we change the code, when we set, when we set up residential design standards, that's a code change. And code changes sometimes takes as long as we did for those residential design standards. Not always. Sometimes they're less, but they're always going to be a couple of hearings for the planning commission and one or two hearings for the city council. So it is a several month process. And if your application's submitted before the code is changed, then you have to run on the rules that were in place. Even if the code is more favorable for you, you would have to resubmit to be in under the new code because you have to, have to be reviewed under the lens of the code at the time. And then I just wanted to be clear, we didn't change the code when we denied the, when we took the staff's recommendation for a denial. I just wanted to be clear on this application that I, I don't know if I said it well enough, that we looked at the findings that the staff had made and the application, and the applicant's testimony and were able to make a determination that they did meet the code criteria and made findings based on the applicant's testimony at the hearing. We didn't change goalposts.
And, and based on the slide that, that Erica just moved to, she might be getting to that. I think that's probably the, the biggest thing that we want to make sure that the planning commission understands is that just because staff, staff drafts a finding based on what we think, that doesn't mean you can't disagree with us. It's, but it has to be based on fact. So go ahead, Erica.
And I, I'm getting there in just about two more slides. No, this is great conversation and we, you know, we briefly just touched on this right now. You know, the findings, you know, in the, in the staff report, you know, really helped the commission to make a determination on the application. The findings establish the evidence that the application before you is meeting all applicable code criteria and the proper land use processes. And it also informs the applicant on why the commission acted as it did and explains how the conclusions are supported by substantial evidence in the record. And I'm going to talk about kind of substantial evidence here in, in just a minute. But, you know, just some common problems with findings. Sometime there's a failure to identify all applicable standards and criteria. Sometimes there could be a failure to address, you know, each standard and criteria, you know, in the code. You know, when we create findings, we don't want to, you know, generalize or, you know, make conclusions without sufficient facts. And we don't necessarily want.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, sorry, I'm gonna pause on that one. So I want to stress that one. That one's a hard one often for commissioners in meetings too. Because you'll hear folks basically saying it doesn't meet a standard because it doesn't seem to provide adequate traffic provisions or, you know, provide, you know, like maybe they, the public feels like it needs a signal or there's going to be too much traffic. But there's a traffic study in the report that isn't contradicted by another professional that says it's fine. And so there, that's where it's like, you can't, you can't just accept a generalized argument. You have to base it in some fact that's, that's that's legitimized and not just anecdotal. I said that poorly, but that, you get the gist.
But that, that's where sometimes as a commission, you have two pieces of expert testimony that are in conflict.
Oh, I'm going to get there, Jean.
Oh, good. Because dueling arborists at a hearing.
Yes. And then, you know, another, you know, common mishap is that we don't want to defer a necessary finding to a condition of, to a condition of approval because this doesn't allow for adequate public review and comment. And it might not likely be reasonable to happen. And then of course, if the project is modified during the hearings process itself, we're going to have to provide new findings to be added to the staff report.
So could you expand on the, the deferring on a condition of approval? Just for clarity, sometimes you put in a condition of approval that says prior to occupancy applicant will submit a parking plan. That is not deferring a, it's, it's deferring on a condition of approval because it's reasonable to see, the staff can look at it and go, there's, there's parking going to be available. But you can't defer whether or not there's enough water to the site.
Yes, exactly. Yep.
So a condition of approval has to be likely to happen.
Correct.
Okay. Another example that I, I saw a lot in the past is, so stormwater, stormwater detention. You know, you don't necessarily have to have everything 100% engineered, but Bob needs to be able to determine that it's reasonably likely that they're going to be able to, to detain the water on site, for example. And so if, if we don't have that information, if they didn't submit a stormwater report, which it wouldn't get to you if they didn't, but you know what I mean? But if, if they didn't submit something, we can't condition something that we're, we, we can't look at and say, yeah, there's a pretty good likelihood that they, they can do that. So that's kind of where that reasonably likely standard applies is those types of things.
So if we want more evidence around a concern that we have, do we like continue the hearing and order some more evidence or a study of some kind? We have some major concern. We, you know, hey, has, has there been any research around this thing? Can we find out? And then let's, I guess, wait two weeks and find out.
Yes.
That kind of thing.
And, and. Yeah. And I think what, what that looks like, I think is more you saying, I'm not convinced applicant that you've really addressed this. We need more information. And then again, it's the applicant's burden to demonstrate to you. I mean, you have to articulate what it is that you don't, that you have concerns about or why you're not convinced. But it's their burden to demonstrate to you or the decision maker. to demonstrate to you or the decision maker that they've, that they've met the criteria.
And the applicant has to, I guess, my, from my experience, has to have the understanding that the commission isn't convinced that they're going to meet the approval criteria for their application to be approved. And then again, is their burden of proof to provide evidence that satisfies our checkboxes that they're going to meet the criteria. Not just that we want to see a better parking plan before we do it, but that we don't believe they meet the criteria and we would have to deny the application because you haven't sufficiently satisfied that need.
Yes, that is absolutely correct. So when we, uh, look at the decision, the planning commission can approve the application, can approve that application with conditions. And this is generally what we see, you know, in these quasi, quasi judicial, um, applications is that if the planning commission approves the application, it's approved generally with conditions. Or the planning commission can, um, deny the application because the facts and the evidence have not been demonstrated that the criteria can be, you know, satisfied through, through the conditions.
And is it true that the state law requires us to work or the staff to work with the applicant to, to whatever means is necessary to try and get the application approved? I mean, is it-
So I don't, I don't, I'm not a hundred percent certain if it's like what the specific law says, but you can't, you can't really, you can't deny it if it can be conditioned. So, um, maybe they didn't submit a landscape plan that was sufficient for you to confirm that they met the criteria, but they easily could. You can't deny it just because they didn't submit something that can easily be confirmed one way or the other. Erica, do you know where, if that's like where, how that's stated in law though?
Yeah, I don't know exactly where that's stated.
I, I think Julia's language helped me understand it is that we can't deny an application if a reasonable condition can be applied that would approval. Okay. I, I just heard someplace that we couldn't, that it was really hard to deny an application because we were told that we had to do whatever we could to condition it to make it work. So that's, that's helps. Thank you.
Jean, how, how often have you seen this commission deny applications in all your time here? Has it happened?
Not very often, because usually the applicant, our staff has a, does a really, really good job of pre-application communication. So when the guy comes in with an application, they know ahead of time what staff's going to be asking. They have a good checklist at, at city staff that says, these are the things you're going to have to do. And so when the applicant's going through the checklist, they can see what's going to happen. The one that I do recall was, there was, um, an application for a gas station next to Safeway where that, um, ATI therapeutic it was. It got denied just because of traffic safety, that if they had put the gas station at that corner, it's a blind corner with a blind driveway into it. It, it was denied because of traffic safety. Other than that, like I said, the staff does such a great job with their pre-application hearings that it's, it's, I think there's things that never make it to us because they're going to be failed.
Maybe that's why it seems like it remains a rubber stamp, because they've already cleaned house prior to getting to us.
Yes, absolutely. And one thing I, you asked a question about if you wanted more evidence. My best recommendation is if you're reading something over the weekend and you go, I think we need to have better evidence for this, call staff because oftentimes they can communicate. We can't communicate with the applicant, but the staff can. And if you communicate to staff that you don't believe that the evidence is sufficient, staff can get that to the applicant and say, this is a, this is a concern that the commission's going to have. You may want to bring additional evidence to the hearing to help satisfy a concern. And I have had several of those come where we didn't have to delay two weeks. We didn't have to do another hearing, but the applicant came prepared to answer concerns. And so that's-
The hoopla during the public hearing.
Right, absolutely.
All right, I'm on the very last slide, the decision. This is the critical slide here. I think we've, you know, we've had some questions about, you know, the planning commission, you know, may want to modify a finding in the staff report that would either, you know, support an application or could possibly deny the application or, um, place another condition on the application to meet a particular standard. You know, and I want to reiterate, the commission can't do this. Just remember that if you modify a finding in the staff report, it really needs to be clearly supported by the evidence in the record. You know, and that evidence needs to be stated in the finding itself. And, and staff, we, you know, we're here to help you, you know, craft this language. Um, and it's always helpful, you know, if you have questions about an application to call staff, you know, ahead of time, you know, prior to the meeting to work some of this out. And then I also want to, uh, you know, touch on this. Could it be conflicting evidence, you know, during, during a public hearing? And what do you do then? These, let's, you know, have these dueling arborists, you know, come in to the commission each, you know, give their, gives their report, you know, about the trees on site. The planning commission, this is interesting. You know, you, the planning commission can select what information should be used in the decision-making process. Just as long as that evidence is reasonable and a person would accept it to be correct. You know, and the commission needs to clearly state what evidence it believes and why that finding is being made. Then you have made an argument for your substantial evidence to support that finding.
And our dueling arborist discussion was an applicant and an opponent came in with two arborists both trying to determine how far away tree protection had to be. And I don't remember what the outcome was. I just remembered that there were two, two arborists giving two different opinions on how far away the tree line protection had to occur and how far away the building had to be or whatever it was. So
And in those situations, that's where you guys get to make, get to make the call. As lucky as that feels.
And one of the things that I, Julie and Eric and I have spoken about are some of these ones where they're where we have a, a, where we need to make a decision on whether they met the criteria, especially as we get in, um, these design standards and when, even in commercial and industrial design standards, whether they've met the criteria or not. Sometimes we have two, two paths by which we walk down. One is a, you know, did you meet, did you get enough points in the industrial design standards? Or the other one where it's more subjective and they're coming to hearing for planning commission and trying to have the staff report written so that it reflects how the applicant believes they met the criteria and that they are going to be approved, but allowing for the staff report to reflect that we still have to make a decision on whether or not it is met or not. And it's a very difficult staff report to write when they have to, when they have someone arguing that they have done it, but they have to write a staff report that lets us still make a decision that whether it's been done or not. So I think we're still working out the bugs in that system.
How do we evaluate zoning change requests? Like, say somebody owns a industrial property and they want instead to go retail or something. And so they've got their whole application for what they want to build, retail, part of that's change. What, how does that? Is there standards for that in our code? I mean, or is it just, how's that work?
So that's a, that's, that's a totally, that's not a quasi judicial process. That's a legislative process. And that, um, there are sort of criteria, but it's very discretionary and
It, it goes to the com- you go back to the comprehensive plan and you determine whether the needs of the community for commercial or, um, industrial or residential. And you have all those comprehensive plan core values that have to be weighed and
And the lucky thing for you guys on that is you just make a recommendation. It's not your decision. You don't have that, that pressure.
See, you'd never get an applicant that comes up with a whole plan for a building and everything, but it's presumed upon a zoning change to submit. That, that seems, they probably waste way too much time.
We, we wouldn't allow that. Again, remember when you submit a site plan, it has to be based on the standards that are in effect at the time you submit your application. So you have to go through that zone change first.
The zone change, um, the, the small lots, the small lots that are next to target, they actually submitted almost like how we did residential design standards, they presented a new chapter in our code that would allow for small lots. And they went through a legislative hearing process that took several months of writing a chapter in our code that would allow small lots using design criteria and very prescriptively. Then, once that code was adopted, then they submitted the application so that they could develop the property. And council was um, not sure how it was going to work. So that council at that time put a sunset clause on it. So that chapter of the code was enacted, was in place for a period of time and then it sunsetted. Um, and not, it wasn't renewed.
This is interesting. This goes back to my, what I said to Commissioner Giles earlier about you can't change things on the applicant. But that's after they've applied. So that's more in quasi judicial land. We probably can legislatively change zoning on some, on some property. Because I mean, laws get passed all the time that affect people up and down. There's no compensation given by the government. That's just how it works. Right? Or how does that work? Or maybe help me out with that?
If you're upzoning or downzoning spot parcels, I think that would be, to me, my opinion is, is that if you're spot zoning parcel, then your development code isn't, or your map is not correct. You shouldn't be changing parcels. You should have a plan in place that is comprehensive, not piecled. I mean, there's always exceptions.
Yeah, I mean, that said, you'll get, you'll get requests, but the city, like, the city is unlikely to just spot zone, change things.
No, the areas that affect multiple parcels or something like that. And it's legislative and it goes through legislative process and and it could impact their value in their eyes. It's legislative.
Theory could do, what, what is it? A measure?
A measure, um,
thirty seven?
Fifty, major fifty.
Measure fifty, yeah, we, we typically, let's just say, um, parcel downzoning. We send out notice. Um, and in the notice language, it says, you know, your property is impacted.
Oh, no, I was, I was referring to the, um,
Oh, measure forty seven.
It's, no, it, it basically it was the one, we haven't, clearly we haven't used it lately, but it was, a lot of jurisdictions were dealing with it when it was first adopted. Where essentially if a jurisdiction took action that like limited what you could do on your property, you could do what you were able to do at the time you acquired your property.
Measure fifty.
I thought it was thirty seven. Anyways.
I think it's thirty seven.
But in any case, once they submit an application and it goes into quasi judicial, time is frozen effectively. In terms of what they're allowed to do.
Correct. And, and it's only fair because you wouldn't want your goalpost changed.
So I wanted to, to step back. I, I wanted to step back and just highlight under the, um, ex parte contact. And, and maybe you guys all already know this and it's, it's clear, but, um, we don't want you to have ex parte contact, but if you do, that's okay. You just need to disclose it. And, and sort of as an example, if you drove by a lot and, and you're like, wow, there is no way they're going to be able to get this building on this lot, you know, setbacks or the slope, there's just no way. And you, um, went to the hearing and you did not say that. And then after, you know, throughout the hearing, you didn't ask any questions. And then it came time to deliberation and you said, I'm going to deny it because I, there's just no way that they can meet that, you know, the slope criteria. Again, just making this up. Then, then you have an ex parte issue because you, you've seen it, you've made some judgments and you haven't given the applicant an opportunity to rebut what you think, right? So if you, um, if you say it, you know, if you're like, yeah, I drove by there and I think the slope is really tight, I'm, I'm, I'm questioning how that's going to happen. Then, when the applicant gives their testimony, they can explain how that can happen. And then you still can say, no, I, I, it has to be based on facts, so I'm making that up too. But, but at least then you've, you've based it off of the whole picture and not just your, your information that you haven't given the opportunity for the applicant to provide additional information on.
It's like, it's like what Jean said, you might as well pick up the phone and give staff a call and say, I have this concern. Or it comes up in a public hearing and now you gotta do research and do things potentially.
So, but that, that only, does that only, um, that only applies if you physically go there? Because like, if I read their application ahead of time and I have a concern that I've just come up with here on my, at my desk, then is it still ex parte contact if I?
Should be asking those questions.
Right, I know, I should be asking it along the way, but I'm, but, but I, I, just in your example, I got confused because if I'm, if I'm by myself making an opinion, I thought that that was, that, that's not ex parte contact. But if I'm talking with another person about it and getting other information about, that was-
Right. If you're basing your decision and judgment off some, something other than what they have provided to you and what is in the staff report. Sight, if you're talking to people, if you're taking, if you're doing your own research.
Okay, great. Okay, that, that's what, that's what I thought it was. It's, it's other than what they provided to you. Perfect.
Exactly. It, it doesn't have to be from another person either. You, that's why the driving by the sight is, um, we're in a small town, so we've all driven past the site, you know?
So even then, if, if, uh, say it's some big project that's getting a lot of hoopla from the town, um, no public, you know, we all know people. Somebody, some neighbor on the street's telling you about it and gives you some concern they haven't thought about yet. Is that considered ex parte contact?
Absolutely.
All right, so that might be another case where they have to disclose it. And that might be another case where you call the staff ahead of time. And if, if it's a concern you share, ask, you know, have the applicant be prepared to maybe talk about it.
And even more importantly than that, you have to disclose that someone gave you information that no one else is privy to. So if I, if I happen to be in the coffee shop and two people standing next to me say, hey, did you hear about they're going to build this hotel? I think it's a bad idea. And you know that it's coming before, hearing before you. If they disclose any information that you're now privy to information that no one else reasonably could have heard, you, you really, it's, it's safer to say, I was in a conversation and as soon as I heard that they were talking about this application, I made my present, I've, I've, you know, I've had people, I've stopped people from talking, saying, I'm sorry, you know, I can't really talk about it because it's a hearing- I've, I've, you know, I've had people, I've stopped people from talking, saying, I'm sorry, you know, I can't really talk about it because it's a hearing before us. But I invite you to call the staff and ask questions. Because people have asked me questions about applications. I hear this application's coming up. What do you think? I think that it is a quasi judicial matter and questions should be directed to staff because they have the best information. And if you have a concern, please testify either in writing or you can come to the hearing and and tell me what you think.
But you're also a private citizen, you know, I mean, but you're also an agent of the city, so it's a.
Right, but remember your role as a planning commissioner to, you know, educate the community on land use processes.
Yes, yeah, but that, that example, and I know there's a hand, that example there though, that was just an opinion you ever heard. Somebody said it was a bad idea. That's not information. That's just somebody's talking in a coffee shop.
I should have probably used a better. One, one example is um. When I was still in, and it, it worked out really well for the applicant. They had an open house ahead of time and the neighbor knew there was an intermittent stream that appeared. In the, you know, the guy bought the property in June, was getting ready to develop by fall. He had the, he had the um neighborhood meeting. And the neighbor goes, well, you know, there's a stream that goes through there every January through March. And the guy goes, what? That's a piece of information that if it's disclosed to you privately, you should make sure everybody knows.
That makes sense, okay. Yeah, yeah, it makes a little sense.
And as a general rule, when in doubt, it's best to disclose. You know, um, that it's always safer, um, because then you're not going to get the project. Um, getting appealed on a technicality like that.
Another, another conflict of interest that I disclosed many, many, many times over my years was. Um, I used to work for a company that was um. A wholesale distributor of new, to the new housing market. So we would, you know, our customers' customer were D R Horton, Lennar. All, all these customers. And when a D R Horton project would come before the planning commission. It was easy for me to say, as a wholesale distributor of door hardware, one of my customers may receive this. But it has no direct impact to me because we distribute to all housing developments in the area. It was an abundance of caution. I spoke to the lawyer on several occasions. He says, probably not necessary, but it doesn't hurt. Just so people know that there is no conflict of interest, that you're not going to be benefited directly, you know. I was in the, I was in the accounting department, so I really didn't even ever see the sales end of it anyway. But I never wanted the appearance that, you know, there was something going on with the door hardware that we were selling. You know, conflict of interest is the one that. You have to disclose just like ex parte. So Erica, sorry, you have your hand raised.
Uh, no, I just want to go back to um, you know, visiting the site, doing, you know, doing a site drive by. I worked in jurisdiction where uh, prior to staff giving our presentation, the chair would actually ask. Each commissioner, you know, if they had driven by the site, you know, in person at all. Just because uh. They had some issues with people visiting, you know, a site and then coming to the planning commission meeting and having some, you know, a preconceived bias. You know, on the land use application based on, you know, what they saw um, out on the field. So I thought that was really interesting um, when I worked there. They incorporated that into their overall like protocol for the hearing itself.
You wouldn't discourage us from driving by some of these sites that these folks are, you know, trying to build something on just to see it? Would you, I mean, that, is that, but that, that alone is not necessarily ex parte compact. Just, just drive by to visualize it? It's coming up with an opinion on it or was, what do you think?
I think that I, I would encourage you not to intentionally do that. But if you do intentionally do that, disclose it.
Disclose.
Yeah, frankly, for me, I'd rather just disclose it and because I have a very hard time. Unless I'm holding a blueprint and I go, oh, okay, that's what, like I, I just, I, I have a hard time seeing. Stuff from a blueprint and so part of me just needs to, to know it. But I, as Jean pointed out, we're also in a small town. It's hard not to drive by every single plot in the place.
Yeah.
So.
About the place name just opposing that we.
Let's just, yeah, I think, I think if we take the line of, you know, I'm not doing it so that I can get a preconceived notion. It is, I, I just can't visualize it. That's not how I work and so I will do my best. And I'll disclose it when I've done that, but anyway.
Yeah, I think that's, that's fine. I think the, the key is if, if you do disclose it. And I remember, you know, we, you know, we had stuff, you know, on the tannery site or properties on, you know, near the tannery site. And every commissioner is like, I drive by that twice a day, you know, um, but it, you're just disclosing, I, I drive by it. I'm familiar with it. You know, Jean's talked about how she's attended in the past, um, you know, DEQ meetings. And it's just put it out there so that everybody knows and it doesn't um, look like you might be.
Yeah.
Not disclosing it.
Yeah, alright.
So anybody have any questions about like general process on site plans and quasi judicial? Like if you had a finding concern or you wanted to counter staff or. What, what your role might be or how to improve the process? I'm really thankful you guys took this extra, extra forty five minutes or whatever it was to do this. This is a good.
Very good.
It's, it's good discussion that if we were in person. I, I keep missing because when we were in person, new commissioners could sit next to seasoned commissioners. If something came up, you could just lean over and go, hey, Justin, what does this mean? And he could answer you and say, that's what that's for. And we could just move right on with the hearing. And it's really difficult in the middle of some of these hearings to say procedurally, what do we do if we have a problem? And so I don't. I don't.
This has been, yeah, it's been interesting being new, having been only online. Um, you know, and I manage a team of staff here and um, you know, everyone went totally remote. I've since hired people and this is a little bit of an experience of what it's like not being around anyone, um, trying to learn a job, basically. You know, and there's some value in uh, people overhearing other people work over the Q walls and around each other, you know, especially if you're brand new in a role. And we're going to be more intentional going forward about, you know, once we're back more in the office. Okay, hybrid might be here to stay or whatever, but you're going to spend more time here with some people, at least initially before it allowed to be remote, just because of that. And so on this commission, it's been same way. It's like the only time I ever see you guys is on these meetings. And it's like, we just get right started. I don't know how, when the venue is to ask questions or where, where to go, other than make phone calls. And then I have to worry about ex parte things and whatever, you know. So that's, this has been excellent. I think that's my roundabout way to get there is I very much appreciate this time you've spent helping us with this. Been good.
And I am, you know, it's probably Julie and Eric will cringe, but I don't mind someone calling me and asking me a question. Because I can document it and disclose the ex parte contact if it's just, you know. I've been on it long enough that I sometimes feel like I can translate from staff. Staff super language to my layman terms, but sometimes it's, it's, you know. I just need someone to, to, you know, bounce an idea off to go, am I making any sense with this? And so, you know, we, we. We can't be in person, but we can, can reach out to each other when we want to ask procedural questions. Or just how the next hearing's gonna run, so.
And I think too, and I, I, I've had fun with this particular work session and just, it's, I think it's great. You can never get too much, um, too much of this stuff, really. Um, but I think letting Erica know um, individually if you have questions. But I think, you know, she'll, she can easily schedule work sessions um, like this and maybe not this long. Or, you know, or, or have, you know, if there's like little, you know, half hour places here and there. Um, to, to make sure that you guys are getting those questions answered throughout, you know. Throughout your reviews going forward too. Um, and then, yeah, she absolutely, I know personally, I know, I know she would be more than happy to answer any question you have. And help you figure that out.
Save these slides, Erica. This was a one-on-one course for new men, new.
Well, I'll email this presentation out to everyone.
Yeah, and if you had been in person, you'd realize that I'm a lot smarter when we're in the room together. Because I can take a break and run over and whisper in Erica's ear and go, what am I supposed to be saying this time? Instead of it's always, always on and I just have to roll with it because that's all.
If I'm saying something dumb, you can just kick me under the table.
Yeah, that, that too. And, and literally the whole um. Having someone next to you where your book's open and you can look over and going, ooh, they're on the wrong page. We're, you know, we're over on this other page looking at stuff. It's so difficult. So um, I did want to do one announcement now that we're at work session. I may or may not be at the February eighth meeting. I am, starting tomorrow, I have a, I have to have ankle reconstruction surgery on the second. And that's only six days later, so.
What did you do, Jean?
Oh, it's, I wish I had a fantastic story to tell you. I could, I'll try and make something up. By the time, by the time the eighth rolls around, I'll be on pain medication, so there may be an even better story. But it's, it's nothing, nothing other than uh, you know, an uneven path and a klutzy person. So um, but anyway, there.
Reconstruction sounds like a pretty big deal, so I hope that it goes well.
The, the phrases and terms they're using are. Not reassuring, so.
I'm sorry.
And no, no weight bearing for one month, no driving for three months because it's my right ankle, so. I will be the new remote girl from my office, so. Uh, through all of COVID, I've never had to work from home, so.
Really?
We had, I had to work from home for a week when we had an ice storm, but that was it, so. Anyway.
I was on for about the first six months, but working from home, that was challenged, so.
So if I miss you all on the eighth, good luck. I, I do. I don't know. I, I hope in my mind that, you know, it's, it's not a big deal and by, by Tuesday, I'll be back, ready to go, but.
Well, um, ironically, the public hearing that night is the marijuana development code, so if you're all loopy. Something or other, maybe you just. Yeah, demonstrate.
There's any laws about, there's lots of things that you can and can't do in quasi judicial meetings, but I don't think that um. Running a meeting while on pain meds is against the rules, so I think.
They have to be ex parte communications though.
If I have to use the recreational marijuana to have a meeting, is that a conflict or a bias?
Could be a c- conflict, a bias, might, it's probably all of the above.
Yeah.
We can all agree it'll be fun, though.
I don't think I could do it either way, so. So anyway, I'm pretty nervous, so if you, if I miss you, I'll um, catch you the end of February, so. Anyway.
And prayers, Jean.
All right, anything else lightning for us, Erica, before we?
Thank you, Erica, even for, you know, I'm the midterm guy, coming up on three years. This is very helpful for me, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, bye.
Alright, guys, have a good night.